Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, February 7 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. If you all please stand and join Alderman Gripp in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for tonight.
R. Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Reinert.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Lynch.
T. Dunn.
Here.
Jobson.
Here.
And Burkholder.
Here.
Nine present, your honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome. Let's call the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please, please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. Happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. As a reminder for folks in here, if you'd be kind enough to put your phone on silent or turn it off simply, it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you wish to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you have five minutes. Please address the council as a body or staff as a body and not to any one individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. No clapping, yelling, or cheering. Please don't disturb the meeting. We want to hear from everyone. Thank you. Ms. Merritt, is there an update today?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a reminder to the public that we will hold this Station 3 ribbon cutting tomorrow at 2:00 p.m., and we look forward to seeing everyone there. Back to you, your honor.
Thank you. We have five public hearings this evening, all under Public Works. So Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will read. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, your honor. Open the first public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 15.44 entitled Flood Damage Prevention of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to adopt a new flood insurance study and flood maps and to align the ordinance with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and FEMA standards and regulations. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 13th Street Hillendale Road to Lincoln Avenue reconstruction project. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Tremont Avenue reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fourth public hearing on the specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CY 2024 contract milling program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And open the fifth public hearing on the proposed resolution of necessity covering the 2024 alley resurfacing program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The next series petition communications from anyone? I see Alderman Reinert.
I have the meeting at Red Hawk at 6:00 tomorrow evening, from 6:00 to 7:30, for anyone that wants to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Reinert. Alderman Jobson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a little notice, the February ward meeting for the sixth ward is being moved, was to be next week on the 13th, but is to the 27th, Tuesday, the 27th, Duck Creek Park Lodge, 6:30. I want to thank staff for, for getting that notice out to people as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I have a few things that I want to get off my chest really quickly. I won't be long. I'm just going to say briefly that if I'm such a horrible person, where's the investigation that Cornet and Judith Lee got? I never got investigated, but there's still information rolling around in the media that I'm a horrible person. And the only reason I'm addressing this, because I didn't go to the media. Other folks on this panel went to the media. Tim Kelly did not. So I'm addressing that. And I'm also addressing the fact that there was a panel for black folks to deal with me that was held off to the election time that they never did anything with because Alderman Ortes didn't win his seat. So our mayor decided to not move forward with anything from that. So what does that say to the black and brown community? That once you do an investigation, you don't even come back with information of your findings. So I can go on and on and on, but if I'm such a horrible person, how come I'm not under investigation? So you guys be leery of that decorum and, because y'all know I like to cuss, but I'm going to be real good with mine. I'm going to hold it tight to the chest because I understand what I'm under and what I'm up against. But I'm always be truthful with what's going on, even though I'm in litigations still with what I have going on in my life. And so to the gentleman to the left of me and his haters, so go ahead and write a letter to the editor now. So I see you. You see me? I see you. So anyway, I'm just saying, I'm not going to come back and keep being silent about the things that are happening to me that I'm being dragged weakly over something that I didn't do. So. And the fifth ward meeting will be every Thursday at the last Thursday of the month, and I have the next five months booked out, so I'll send out an email of all the different locations of the things that I have going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anybody else? Very good. We'll move to the four eighters discussion, community development, public works, public safety, and finance. The first one's community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinert will read. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, your honor. Item number one is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-06, being the request of Larry Edward Stoltenberg Trust to rezone approximately 25.84 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Sloper Town Road and Hillendale Road from SAG Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward. You have five minutes.
Gary Eklund. I live in Mr. Kelly's ward, in what city staff call a low-life neighborhood. And they call me a low-life, and they call my black neighbors a low-life. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Listen.
That's why I'm here, but anyway, I will move on. I apologize.
We're starting off on the wrong foot tonight, so let's, let's reassess ourselves, and let's commit to, we're going to talk to what's on the agenda, okay? Which is a rezoning from agriculture to light industrial.
I'm sorry.
And if you have comments about that, I'd love to hear it, and if you don't, please take your seat.
It's very, it's very hard for me to set aside certain issues, but I will get to the point here. I will get to the point here. For decades now, the city of Davenport has been on this endless demolish central city housing and sprawl out north. And we've sprawled out, and we sprawled out, and we sprawled out, and we built the DeBremmer Center, and we hired more and more staff, and we hired more staff, and we hired more staff, and we built more roads, and we built more sewers, and we sprawled out, and we used TIFF to do this and do that. And it's an environmental disaster. It's an economic disaster. The sewer and garbage bill is a direct result of all of this sprawl development, and it's bad for the environment, and it's bad for the city. People in the city, I swear, I recently played with Sam Cooke's lyric from "A Change Is Going to Come." I swear, the city of Davenport is worse for its bottom half in 2024 than it was in 1964. And this sprawl development is a huge part of it, and this should be turned down. We should preserve some green space, some agricultural land, some land that monarch butterflies can breed on, and we shouldn't be endlessly sprawling and putting it on the backs of our poorest citizens.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll go to council. No one from the council? This item will move on, and we'll move on to item number two. Item number two is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property located at 1413 West 13th Street to Kyle and Samantha Beal's petitioners. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number three is a resolution approving a contract with the Salvation Army to administer the Home ARP Short Term Supportive Services Program as a sub-recipient. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I'll just take a moment to kind of point out what this is and say that this is a good thing. So I think roughly $1.2 million going to the support of those folks who are homeless or are in danger of being homeless. The Salvation Army is going to be the administrator of this, so $1.2 million. These are federal funds that were awarded through, through ARPA that are just now making their way through the process, and we're, we're putting those out there. The Salvation Army was the only nonprofit who put in for this, and I think they're well-suited to, to serve this purpose. So this is a good thing. This is going to those folks who currently are unhomed or are in danger of, of being unhomed. So that concludes our agenda, so I would ask Alderman Reinert to please set it.
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to place items one, two, and three on the consent agenda, and there's nothing to place on a discussion agenda.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. The community development agenda has been set. Back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinert. The next series, public safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderman T. Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First item under public safety agenda is a resolution approving street lane or public ground closure requests for the listed dates and times. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Corn Belt Running Club, Chili Chase, four-mile run-walk, 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., Sunday, February 25, 2024. Closure, only one lane of each street, police-controlled. East Pleasant Street from Fernwood Avenue to Forest Road. Forest Road from East Pleasant Street to East George Washington Boulevard. East George Washington Boulevard from Forest Road to Jersey Ridge Road. Next, Center for Active Seniors Incorporated, 42nd Annual St. Patrick's Day Race, downtown, Saturday, March 16, 2024. Closures, 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Second Street from Harrison Street to Brady Street. 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Second Street from Harrison Street to Ripley Street. 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., two westernmost travel lanes and parking lane on Brady Street from Second Street to Third Street. 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Third Street from Brady Street to Gaines Street. 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Third Street from Gaines Street to Division Street. 9:50 a.m. to 10:00, 10:00 a.m., all lanes of Brady Street from River Drive to Third Street. Next, St. Patrick's Society Grand Parade, oh man, 30, looks like we've got 38 there. Downtown, Saturday, March 16, 2024, 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. Closures, Gaines Street from the Centennial Bridge to Third Street. Third Street from Gaines Street to the River Center where the parade dispans. And last, the Office, St. Patrick's Day Celebration, 116 West 3rd Street, approximately 2:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m., Saturday, March 16, 2024. Closure, northernmost parking lane and two travel lanes on West 3rd Street from Main Street to 116 West 3rd Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, motion approving noise variance request on the listed dates and times for outdoor events. Again, I will read each of these before asking for comment. St. Patrick's Society Grand Parade, 38, downtown, 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., Saturday, March 16, 2024. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, the Office, St. Patrick's Day Celebration, 116 West 3rd Street, approximately 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday, March 16, 2024. Outdoor music over 50 dB. And last, Mississippi Valley Fair Incorporated, 2024 events, Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds, 2815 West Locust Street, various dates, April through September 24. There's a list attached online. Outdoor music slash races over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And then last, we have item number three, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read the, the one under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. We have Tantra, 589 East 53rd Street, new annual license with outdoor area, license type Class C liquor on premises. And then there are those items under Section B, annual license renewals, which I do not read, but are for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on, and I would ask Alderman Dunn to please set the agenda.
I'd like to take a motion to move all items on public safety to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderman Tim Dunn. Next series, public works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman R. Dunn, please.
Thank you, your honor. Item number one is the first consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 15.44 entitled Flood Damage Prevention of the Davenport Municipal Code to adopt a new flood insurance study and flood maps and to align the ordinance with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and FEMA standards and regulations. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the West 75th Place Mill and Overlay Project by Minats in the amount of $205,652.86. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the FY 2022 Contract Sewer Repair Program by Hometown Mechanical in the amount of $583,521.95. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and pavement associated, associated with the Iowa American Water Company, first edition. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the compost facility aeration trench replacement project to brand construction in the amount of $225,036. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the West 13th Street, Brown Street to Scott Street resurfacing project to Langman Construction in the amount of $270,470.51. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 13th Street Hillendale Road to Lincoln Avenue reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Tremont Avenue reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council.
Alderman Gripp. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Just a question for the staff on scope of this. So I am, it's much needed. I understand that. I just want to confirm, are we replacing concrete with concrete in this?
Clay Merritt, Engineering Capital Projects, yes. So this will be a full, full concrete reconstruction project.
So not joint repair and not replacing concrete with asphalt? We're replacing...
Correct.
Good.
It gets, that, that particular section of road gets an incredibly heavy amount of truck traffic, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CY 2024 contract milling program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a raise grant program application to the United States Department of Transportation for financial assistance with enhancing and improving transportation access throughout flood mitigation efforts and infrastructure improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Alderman Jobson.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank staff for continuing to go after this grant. I know we haven't got it in a couple iterations, so hopefully third time's a charm, but after the flood mitigation study, that was one of the priorities is, hey, let's be aggressive in, you know, tackling some of these, you know, those kind of stage one type projects, and, you know, hopefully we can receive the funds to do those types of things. So thanks for being persistent with that.
Hold on, I'm against.
Thank you so much. Could we have, just for folks at home, someone from staff to talk a little bit about what this grant is particularly for? We've heard about raise grants before, but let's talk about this one. Thank you.
So this particular grant from the US DOT focuses on enhancing transportation. So going back to the flood resilience plan, one of the keys is ensuring continual consistent detour routes during, during major floods, so flood stages over 18, which is for us a, a major flood. So for what this project does is there's key select road raises along the, along a detour path, mostly is on Rockingham Road up to Third and Fourth, Third and Fourth, all the way up to East River Drive. Now, this also works in conjunction with this, the flood mitigation projects that are currently under construction right now. So I'm sure everyone's seen all the construction equipment out on River Heritage Park. That is to ensure that backflow does not come up from underneath the storm sewer system, and then likewise, what's going to be happening on Marquette and River Drive. So this just builds on top of that. So when we have these larger flood events, we have one consistent detour route that is at least up to river stage 22.
Yep. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a motion awarding a contract for the Brady Street Iowa Highway 461 and Veterans Memorial Parkway 65th Street traffic study to HR Green in amount not to exceed $78,500. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Oh, sure. Please step to the lectern and give your name and ward.
Judith Lee, second ward. And I also want to thank Public Works staff. This has been a couple of years in the making. This is to take a look at the crazy intersection up at Veterans Memorial Highway and Brady and all the, the interesting ramps that are there, and to try to find a more creative and more effective solution to traffic movement there. So I really appreciate all the work that's gone into that, and I'm looking forward to see the solutions that they come up with. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I would like to make a motion to move all 11 items to the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda's set, and back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next series, finance. Alderwoman Newton and whoever she selects will discuss the finance. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, your honor. Tonight, I'll have Alderman Tim Dunn help me. We have two items on the finance agenda. First item, a resolution approving a payment in the amount of $107,975.75 to the Scott County Auditor for the 2023 election expenses. I would first see if there's anyone from the public wishing to comment on this. Seeing none, is there anyone from council? Absolutely, yes. Please step to the podium, state your name and either your address or your ward, sir.
Gary Eklund. I'm in Mr. Kelly's ward. I don't know if this falls under the category, and I'll probably be shooed, but I've been very concerned that there was electoral fraud in Davenport, both the hiding of the payment of the, the former city administrator and the odd, odd and conflict of interest-ridden relationship between the city of Davenport giving millions of dollars to the Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber of Commerce acting as a politically partisan organization. And I would just hope that somewhere in there, somebody, whether Scott County Attorney's Office or the auditor, someone could investigate whether there was electoral fraud, as I believe there was.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public? Is there anyone from council? Alderman Jobson.
Thanks, Chair. I had asked yesterday at management update, is this, I mean, is this amount kind of in line with the past, past few years, or we, was there anything special?
Sorry. Yes. It appears in line with the payment that was made two election cycles ago, but was quite different from the just prior election cycle, so that's going to require us to look into that just a little bit more, and that's underway.
Thank you very much, and again, don't take my question as staff needing to do a deep dive on this. I was just, just curious. So thank you.
Seen anyone else? I would, I would be asking, when we get to that, that this be put on the consent agenda. The second item for finance is a motion directing the city administrator and related staff to implement an internal animal services unit and negotiate any related contracts and agreements. Prior to taking comment from the public or from the council, I would like to take a point of privilege to let the public know that this matter is still in the negotiation phase, so I would be requesting that this item be put on the discussion for next week. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak to this? Please step forward, state your name, address, or ward, please.
Cheryl Shagina, third ward, and I support that motion to discuss it at a later date because based on what happened in January, you were putting that decision off for two cycles. I'm not positive we've gone through the two cycles to where the animal people could be here to represent the, again, the ramifications of making that change without further study of, again, all the different animal groups, ASPCA, all the different rules, regulations, democracy, or just the getting into the city, under the city umbrella, and all the stuff that that brings before you move forward. I think, again, there needs to be a whole lot more discussion, not just between the board members and city, city staff, but including the public again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please step forward.
Thank you. Judith Lee, second ward. I also want to talk about this topic and related to what she was saying about transparency and the role of council and staff, about creating an animal services division within the police department. This is a big decision, and it involves a lot of money. When I was on council, we were not made aware as a council that the city had entered into negotiations with Scott County Humane Society until we received an email from the Humane Society and a subsequent email from city staff saying we, as aldermen, should not communicate with them from the Humane Society because negotiations were in progress. Importantly, we were not advised what caused the Humane Society to discontinue the agreement and request money from the city. That's a very fundamental question that we didn't have then, and I believe we don't have now. At office hours discussion before the, in December, it indicated to me that if city staff had hard numbers on what the initial cost and the long-term continuing cost would be, as well as whether the police department even wanted to take this department on, it was not discussed or provided at that office hours. I don't know it was discussed at other office hours, but not in the one I was in. At that office hours, I requested that it was not appropriate that aldermen elect have not been involved in those discussions, yet you were hit with such an important, important decision for your very first cycle on council, without the detailed information you needed the detailed information you needed for making an informed decision. Certainly was not in the background information on the agenda. I agreed on you tabling the decision for two cycles. I think that was very wise in order to get more information and to provide more time for negotiations. I was shocked to see that the decision was placed on the very next committee of the whole agenda under suspension of the rules with no additional information provided. I believe it was highly appropriate for counsel to make the decision not to pass the suspension of the rules because that violated, I believe, the two-cycle tabling that you folks had already identified. Now I see the same vote up again, and there is no additional information provided on this issue, at least to the public. And we in the public don't know the cost of initiating this, cost of liability insurance, employee wages and benefits, the highly specialized infrastructure needed, including buildings, vehicles, special equipment, training, and carrying this program on long-term. We do not know if the police department or the police union are supportive of taking this on. We do not know how this decision will affect towns and municipalities in Scott County outside of Davenport. And if they are in agreement with you, with Davenport taking it over, and if so, what those agreements would be. We do not know what certifications the city needs and their costs for annual training. We do not know what federal, state and local laws apply to running something like this. We in the public do not know if any veterinarians are willing and/or able to join with a new unit for services 24/7. We do not know if the city program will be a no-kill or nearly no-kill program, and under what circumstances either killing or euthanasia will be performed. Any partners with the city must be nearby for transporting animals. You don't want to transport them long distance, and not in Illinois. And I understand that we've been talking about Mylan. We do not know who such local partners might be. There is much that we as the public do not know that is critical for this decision-making, committing large amounts of taxpayer money for a very long period of time. I assume that under transparency requirements, counsel also does not have this information. Yesterday afternoon, I heard the interim city administrator tell counsel that staff have included a placeholder for this division in the city budget. If they know enough about this program to incorporate it into the budget prior to council decision, then they know enough to share that information with you and with us in the public. This also tells me the staff may have already made the decision and just insists on your ratification of their decision. Ratification is when a decision has already been made and your job is purely ministerial. You have no discretion in the matter. Approval is when counsel publicly debates an issue and makes a public decision that may or may not approve the proposal. I ask, and this is such an excellent example of it, who is really running the city? Counsel is the legal governing body or staff. Please use your authority to make a good decision.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gary Eklund, I live at Alderman Kelly's ward. I want to speak in opposition to this, primarily on the basis of the fact that the city of Davenport has way, way, way too many employees right now. It's a bloated empire. Every department head wants more pay and more employees. And I congratulated the nice four police officers that were recently hired. They look polite. They look courteous. And I hope they are well-trained. And I hope that they are taught that they should treat everybody equally regardless of race or ethnicity or economic class. But giving the police department more to do when they've got enough to do, you know, my, my primary focus for the police department would be on violence and, and violence, assault, the things that people think of, you know. I think they get carried away with what some staff members in the city say. They say the city, the job of the city of Davenport is to come down hard on the lowlifes on behalf of the higher-class citizens. And that should not be the view of the police department. And the police department should not have to be worried about cats in a tree or cats running loose. I mean, maybe a cat in a tree if they want to rescue a cat in a tree. That's probably the fire department. But they should not be hiring 10 more people to run around and collect dogs when we already had something. The city, when they hire an employee, employees get paid vacation time, paid sick time, paid holidays. They get Martin Luther King off, even if they hate Martin Luther King. And people in the private sector do not get those benefits. And then they get retirement benefits on top of that. And I'm sure that any city staff members who are hired for this are going to make a lot more money than they probably did at the Humane Society, although I don't know what they made either. But I mentioned the D Bremmer Center before. It's an empire. It's an empire. The city bought some land where they had a polluted factory not long ago. And instead of suing the owners to clean up the lot, like we should have done, the city bought the lot and cleaned it up. It's an empire. We own enough land. I mean, sure, we have, we own enough land. We could put up, you know, $100 catcher stations, you know, on, on all the land that we own. But my primarily focus on this right now is the city of Davenport, I believe, by this time next year could have 20% fewer employees and everyone in the city would pay less and have just as good a service. It's a bloated empire of overpaid staff. And adding any employees to that, and like I say, the police department, you know, I, I personally, in my neighborhood, I didn't even call the police. I wasn't really a witness. I've heard gunshots with, close to my house on multiple occasions. One time I was out in my backyard, and I'm, I'm like right here in my backyard, and I was gardening before the city destroyed my gardens. But I was out in my backyard and I heard, I heard gunshots. Boom, 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 boom. I heard boom, boom, boom. I'm talking about the police department. This is a police department thing.
Mr. Redd, can you please stick to the agenda item?
Well, I'm trying to talk about employee staffing and police department. And so I'll get to the point. They should be worried about gunshots. They should be worried about rapes. They should be worried about murders. They should be worried about bank robberies and holdups at the gas station and people beating up their girlfriends or their boyfriends or whoever they're beating up. They should not be hiring new police department officials to go out and chase dogs. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and your either address or ward, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Alderwoman Jocelyn, I'm Ashana Dixon. I am not a part of the seventh ward. Everybody knows I love the Humane Society for what they do, even though I am known now not to be the absolute dog lover. Okay, but they deserve a chance at life and happiness, just like each and every one of us. And we all know, well, no, I won't say that because I don't want to be point of order today. Probably later. The police department has enough on their hands already. So in order to lay this on the police department, I think is an absolutely terrible idea. And I want to thank you, Ms. Jocelyn, for delaying, you know, prolonging this discussion. We can't even get the police out on to our homes for regular things. Neighbor problems, missing children, even though they're runaways. Oh, they're a runaway, you know, carry on. I had a little girl go missing last weekend. That's what they, we don't have time for this right now. So obviously, we need to hire more police officers to do the, the work of the city that we need them to do and not to be rescuing animals. We already have somebody do that. So before you go off and spending more of our tax money for something we already have in place, I'd ask you just to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? Before asking Alderman Tim Dunn to make a motion, hopefully putting one on the consent agenda and two on discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed counsel. Alderman Jodgin.
Thanks, Ms. Chair. Couple comments and then maybe a question for staff. And so, I mean, the reason why we're here is because there was a huge ask by the Humane Society above and beyond what we're already paying them, right? So people that come up and want to say, let's not spend taxpayer dollars to make this part of the city, city staff, I mean, we want to just cut a blank check to the Humane Society to extend their service? So my comment is this. Going forward down the road and trying to determine if this is the best financial decision for the city is what we're trying to do. You know, if the Humane Society hadn't come forward with, with this ask, we wouldn't even be in this situation. So I hear a lot of people come up and talk, but it, it's just something that I, I think that gets a little lost in the weeds there is that, that bringing this on, you know, for potentially, I should say, potentially bringing this on as a city, as a city service and within the police department is just frivolously throwing away money where just cutting a check to the Humane Society for a million dollars, I believe a million dollars over what they were already receiving per year is A-OK. And so I give kudos to staff for going down the road of trying to see if this is something that is beneficial to the city and the taxpayers. Not sure if people were aware that recently Medic became a department of the county, right? And so while a different situation, Medic EMS had some financial, financial difficulties. And hopefully I'm not breaching anything, but we as a city looked to see, hey, is this something we could, we could take on, you know? I mean, so I, I see this as, the Humane Society issue is something similar to dealing with Medic EMS, right? We're, we're going down the path of trying to determine what is the best financial course for the city. I, I don't think any decisions have been made. I know there's information that, yes, we as a council need to receive. I look forward to receiving that as negotiations go. I'm not going to ask staff to kind of negotiate itself against itself and divulge a lot of information here. So I, I trust that as staff does negotiate and does go to the table with the Humane Society, all in good faith, that when the time is right, we will get the information that we need. Now, my question is this to the interim city administrator. I still read this motion as something that says, all right, if, if we approve this next week, then there is authority to start hiring people and actually get this going. And is it that I'm just over, overreading it? Or would approving this emotion, approving this motion next week actually allow those types of things to occur?
It's that, the answer to that is twofold. I would say that this motion or resolution would allow us to begin posting job positions. But obviously, that would take us several months before any hiring would actually occur. And then this would allow us to go begin negotiating the related service contracts that would be needed. And I think that we have said very publicly at this point that we, as a city, would have no intent to run or operate a shelter. We would need to locate a shelter partner. That contract would certainly be over $50,000. So that would come back to you. And I would say the majority of the components that are in the budget that we have independently discussed with you, the majority of those are over 50 and would come back to you for approval as well. So this would really be just to kick the process off and allow the, the additional due diligence to occur that we're not able to do right now.
Thank you very much. I'm done. Thanks, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. And just maybe to add a little bit of context and some data to what Alderman Jodgin said, because what he said is accurate, is the reason we're here is because we had a contract with the Humane Society that the Humane Society decided to opt out of. They terminated the contract. So the city council in the city has to decide how we're going to offer that service going forward. Are we going to do it internally or are we going to continue to operate it externally? Okay? And the reason why the Humane Society said that they want to terminate the contract is because they want more money and not just a little bit more money, but a significant amount of money. So in 2017 for this contract, we were paying 2,000 or $211,000 a year, right? We got up to the point where we're paying 450 or 500. Is that correct?
Close. A little bit over 400,000.
A little bit over 400.
Yeah, with a capital contribution.
So we got up to 400 in 2023. And so then when they opted to terminate the contract that we had with them, their ask was 1.4 million, okay? $1 million per year over what they currently get, okay? So I hope that the public can understand that is a huge difference in what we were paying them for the service and what they're requesting for the service. Now, the staff has to look at options, right? And so they are asking, hey, if we, if we don't want to pay them 1.4 million, what does that internal option look like? And I think the council, last month in, in January rightly said, hey, let's get council people, along with a couple of our staff, to go talk to the Humane Society and see if we can come to an agreement that is more reasonable for both sides. We are currently doing that, right? And Alderwoman Newton mentioned that. We are still hopeful that we can come to an agreement with the Humane Society. But if we can't, the city has to make the decision. Are we going to write a 1.4 million annual check out of our general fund, right, which is tight? Or are we going to look at ways that we can offer this service internally? Okay? That's the issue before us. And the city did not initiate this, right? The Humane Society initiated this by terminating the contract. Please understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you very much. Just to add also some timing on this, and I think that's part of the reason why we see this again. Also, we had said it would come back on the agenda. So if we say it's going to come back on the agenda, it has to come back on. We don't have the right to just say, oh, it won't be on the agenda. So understand that as well. The, if you could, so Administrator Merritt, if you could, when the, the contract originally ran through...
It was a three-year contract with some options.
Ending in June of this year?
No, I think we had two additional years that were left. And then we received an early cancellation notice.
An early cancellation, which would have been in effect in late February. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we would have been left if, basically, we were told we're canceling the contract and we would have been left without any services as of about the end of February. So that creates certainly a crunch in trying to, unless a certain amount was paid, correct, over what the contract was. So the contract that was supposed to end in June was now we're ending it the end of February. So again, it's not something the city asked for, but that was, I believe, the timing. So if the, if, from a responsible standpoint, if we are faced with someone saying, we're not going to do this anymore and we're ending here, then what happens to all the animals in the city? If we don't start doing some planning, whether it is finding another provider, whether it's taking it in-house, I don't think that, I, for myself, I can't speak with this counsel, but, and I don't think any of us want to be running an animal control place. But we have to have, somebody has to be dealing with this situation. We can't either let animals suffer or residents suffer. So these are not timeframes that we asked for, expected or generated or initiated at all. And I think that's another little piece of this. Sometimes it gets missing. But one of the reasons this is on the agenda in this cycle is because we said we were, we were, we were suspending it for two cycles. So now it's back. So, thank you.
Anyone else from counsel? Seeing no one else, prior to asking Alderman Tim Dunn to move item one to the consent agenda and two to discussion, I just mentioned that for purchases of 10,000 to 50,000, we have seven listed on today's agenda. I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn to please set the agenda.
Let's make a motion to move item one to the consent agenda and a motion to move item two to discussion.
I hear a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. I now yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderwoman Newton and Alderman Dunn. Next area, is there any other ordinances, resolutions or motions? There are none for tonight. The next area, is there any public with business? If anybody wants to address the council, please come to the podium. You have five minutes. Please remember our rules. Thank you.
Jessica Knowles, second ward. I'm coming before the council tonight on three parts to what I have to talk about. And luckily for you, it's not 324 Main Street because we'd be here all night. Up on Fairmont and Kimberly, we obviously need to do something at that intersection. I have brought it to a council member before. It is becoming ridiculous, accident after accident. If you live in the second ward, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I live and work in the second ward. I know at least two in the last four years of accidents, people dying. One of them was a really close friend of mine. We need to do something with it. I'm tired of being, almost ran off the road every day, every day. Two, my second one, I really would like to know the follow-up with the investigation with Ortiz and Kelly as well. As the public, we have the right to know. It was brought in front of us. It should be delegated in front of us as well of how that investigation went. Now, three, I read a article last night and I got to thinking about it. I promise you, I'm not reading no names. But the real question should be, why do people continue to harm victims? I know that I have sat here endlessly for the last nine months and you guys have literally spit in 324 Main, oh, I lied, oop, my bad, literally spit in 324 Main victims. There's, has been no justice. There has been no fines. There has not been no charges. When is that going to happen? Because I'd really like to know. And I agree with that. Why keep harming the victims? I get that. And I understand it completely. Something I agree with. So when are we going to have something done for 324 Main? Because we know certain individuals are still out here, still committing crimes to this day. That could be hazarded to you, to you, you and you. I mean, I, that individual was arrested on a DUI. He could have got in an accident and hit one of your guys' cars or hit one of your kids' cars, killed your kid, grandkid. When is something going to be done with this man?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Ralph Kelly and I stay in the first ward. Rick is a great person. All of you guys are doing a tremendous job of holding down, which is considered to be one of the best cities in the Quad Cities. be one of the best cities in the Quad Cities. What I would like to say to you, though, is that you would take a deeper look at what's really happening. You know, I don't disagree with the animals. I have a pet myself, and I take care of them. I don't disagree with the new housing projects and things like that. But I think respect of one another is probably the best thing that you can do for a city, whether you're staying northwest or you're staying southwest, or you're staying downtown. Everybody deserves the same amount of respect. When I purchased my first property in the first ward, I said, man, I got to get another one. I purchased the third property in the first ward. Said, man, that's not enough. So I purchased a property in the fifth ward. This is a good city to live in. But it's the people that make the city great. I've had the third ward alderman do a lot of great projects down through the years. We've had 10-year relationships. I've had great success with the current mayor. I've heard of all of you. But what are you going to leave as a legacy as a group? As a group? Am I brother's keeper? Yes, I am. I got 40 years of public service that I've done. I could be rich, too. But I choose to give back. I choose to respect those that are beside me. And I've had some pretty respectable people that's still looking up to you. But I don't think you're conscious that they're looking. And I say, because I come down to represent myself, my brother, and my mother. I don't want to lose that feeling that this is a great place to live. But it's up to you to help me to keep it. You have to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Latrice Lacy. I live in the fifth ward. Zurna Hurston said, if you're silent about your pain, they'll kill you and say that you enjoyed it. I'm here to say, I'm sick of this shit. I don't enjoy it. And I'm tired of being silent about it. Next, I want all of you to look up the Dunning Kruger effect. I think the vast majority of the city's problems are caused by it. It's a form of cognitive bias where people with limited competence overestimate their expertise. And that's why you think that you can do things that you can't do. You don't respect people's professional expertise. You don't respect people's skills. And I don't know if that's council or if that's staff, and you all are just co-signing it. I'm not sure. But I had an issue that has come up, and I want it to be on record that this has come up. We hear about people every day who are afraid to call the city when they have concerns with their property, because they think if the city comes out, they're going to condemn their property, and they're going to end up homeless. So they would rather stay in a house with a hole in the ceiling, with the floor falling in, because they don't want to be homeless. Having some sort of roof over your head is better than having not one at all. A couple of years ago, the gas company came out and replaced the gas lines all around the house, tore up the sidewalks, tore up the streets. We ended up with a sinkhole in our front yard in the boulevard area. So we called Mid-American on May 2, 2023. Said, there's a sinkhole out there. We think the work that you did created the sinkhole. Mid-American contacts the city of Davenport, May 12, 2023. They speak to a staff person. He confirmed that the sinkhole was the cause of the city's work that they had done in the area, and that the city was going to take care of it, and Mid-American did not need to follow up with us, because the city was going to handle it. We contacted our alderman because the sinkhole got larger. The alderman contacted Public Works. They responded immediately and said, not our problem. That's the homeowner's problem. That's the storm sewer. We did a photograph, diatest conveniently. Our equipment malfunctioned at Latrice's house. Hard to not say that that doesn't seem like further retaliation and harassment. But I digress. So we don't have a record of when we did the diatest. We don't have a record that we did the diatest. We don't have a record of what the results of the diatest were, only that we did one last year when we came out in May of 2023, and we never said anything else. But it's a sinkhole in the front yard that somebody could fall in on my property so that I would be sued. Also, it's just dangerous. So would I point out, well, why the hell did the city staff person tell Mid-American not to worry about it and not to follow up if it was our fault? Why didn't they say something to us? This has been a year. We hear back, oh, we're going to go back out and test it again. Don't worry about it. We'll go back out. We're going to test it again. Don't worry about it. I get a letter in the mail today saying, this might be your issue that is leaking into the stormwater drain and has caused a sinkhole. It might be. How in the world does the city have a stormwater drain, which I presume exits out into the Mississippi River, and you don't know where the water is coming from that's going into it? How? We don't know if it's yours or your neighbor's. If you don't fix it in 30 days, we're going to bill this to you. How? If we don't know where it's coming from, we don't know what's causing it, how am I getting a threatening letter that tells me I have 30 days to fix an issue with the city's storm sewer? How? So now I have to rush and call a plumber out. The plumber comes out today. He says, I have no idea who's this is, but this certainly doesn't seem like it's coming from your house. He calls the city staff person out. City staff person comes out. This is totally the city's fault. We're going to fix this. Don't worry about it. Just ignore it. Don't don't worry about it. We'll take care of it. So you're verbally telling me to ignore a written notice that I'm going to be billed for something in 30 days if I don't fix it. Meghan Trainor said it best. Your lips are moving. I know you're lying. So I'm not going to take somebody's word that verbally this written letter that I received doesn't matter. The guy leaves after talking to my husband, comes back like five minutes later under my security camera, so it's recorded. I called back to Public Works, and I don't know what's going on. They said that y'all have a drain here, but you don't. Something weird is going on. And I agree, something weird is going on.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Derek Cornet, seventh ward. How y'all doing tonight? I was driving down Kimberly the other day, and I was just totally amazed. I was shocked. I couldn't believe this was happening in beautiful Davenport, because we're law-abiding people. You know, that big digital sign that's up there on the corner of Kimberly by Panera's, there was an ad for the dispensaries over in Illinois. Now, to my knowledge, marijuana is illegal by the federal government, and it's illegal in the state of Iowa. So by letting these dispensaries advertise in Iowa, you're giving tacit permission to the people of Davenport that they can go across the river and come back and commit a felony. What kind of stupid, you know, don't let them advertise over here. You know, that's just that's just irresponsible on your part. I don't care whether marijuana is legal or not, you know, but the law is the law, right? Isn't that what we're here to do? Enforce the laws of Iowa? Yeah? Okay. I see heads. Yeah, 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 good. So I mean, personally, I think they should legalize it. But, you know, if you if you're giving telling the people in Davenport, oh, yeah, you can go across the river. Hell, just go over there and get it and drive it back across. You know? Oh, by the way, that misdemeanor that you would get for civil possession is now felony because you cross state lines with it. Yeah, really? You should take better care of the city and look at stuff like that. Second point is, last time we met, there was a young lady up here talking about junior theater and how, you know, all the good things that it was going on. And an alderperson said, oh, we've already discussed this. No, the thing on the agenda was conveyance of the property, not the good things that the junior theater does. So y'all, real quick, call people out. But, you know, before you pull the trigger, remember what was on the agenda and, you know, think about it before you cut someone off real quick. Y'all have a great day now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Gary Eklund, and I can't help but say, although I I'm afraid this will be taken the wrong way, but I don't endorse the candidate. I have no idea what the difference between Alderman Cornet and his opponents might be, but I believe that he was slandered, and I hope he sues everyone who slandered him.
Mr. Eklund, please.
I was gonna, I didn't realize there was public comment tonight, but there's always lots to talk about. I cannot come up here without mentioning the Trail of Tears, the genocide, and the fact that the city's legal department since 2021 has declared it illegal for me to grow tomatoes in my own yard. And that's not a joke. I am prepared to go to the Supreme Court to establish that I have a right to grow tomatoes in my own yard, grapes, blueberries, blackberries, raspberries. I once sat through a court hearing back when Thurgood Marshall and William Brennan were alive. And that was a long time ago. All I wanted to do was stay home, fix up my house, be a gardener, put all my money into my house, my gardening. That's all I wanted to do. City came looking for me with hatred so intense. And the Quad Cities Times may have been referring to me when they mentioned one person keeps talking about a city employee, conversations with a city employee. That was not just one person. That was the entire city. There were letters that I have that went to the mayor, the city administrator, human resources, legal, civil rights, HUD, Kansas City, legal, mayor, human rights, legal. And after all of that, they came and destroyed Native American religious art. There's been no arrests, no apologies. And believe me, there is a constitutional right to have Native American religious art in my yard. And I don't think I've talked about it here. Maybe I have. They also destroyed a nativity scene. I inherited from a dead friend of mine whose name was David. And when he died, I got a nativity scene from him. And I don't decorate for Christmas. I've never done all that stuff. But this was a work of art, and I decided to leave it on a picnic table in my driveway. I had a black wood nativity scene. It had ceramic pieces. The city of Davenport Supervisor of Code Enforcement herself told me it was illegal for me to have that on a picnic table in my yard, and I was forced to watch as they destroyed a nativity scene. I know the United States Supreme Court is not going to say that Davenport City has the right to come and destroy a nativity scene. People think people may think I'm here for five minutes of fame. You would never have seen me if I was not a crime victim. And if the police had done their job and arrested the people responsible, the head of the neighborhood department, the head of code enforcement, and a particular thing, plus the legal department, people who were involved, they had arrested them people after December 22, I believe Ryan Hitchcock and Daniel Prehn and Sean Colvin would be alive. Because it would have came out that the reason why they declared it illegal for me to grow food in my yard was because a white landlord from Bettendorf said he didn't like looking at tomatoes in my yard. And the city said, oh, we'll just declare it illegal for him to grow tomatoes. He's a low-life half-breed poverty-wage worker. It's not like he's got money to hire a lawyer and defend himself. And we've got the legal department. We've got everything. He's got no rights. It's taken a long time, but if I don't die first, there is going to be justice. There's an open city administrators department. As far as I know, it's they didn't mention it that I saw where there's also an opening for the legal department. There's going to be openings for the human resources department and many other things not too far in the distant future, I believe. I'm appealing to Native Americans all around the country, dark-skinned black African Americans, to apply for the city administrators' job and the top legal counsel.
I'll give you your time. Chief, if you could ask that gentleman to please take his conversations outside if he's going to continue. Thank you very much. Ms. Ericsson, continue.
Okay. I'm appealing to all Native Americans who are qualified to be the city corporation council or city administrators to consider coming to Davenport, Iowa and applying, knowing full well that they're coming into the most hate-filled hostile territory where city staff openly express race hatred without being fired, and they use the N-word in city hall. So anybody who's Native American should know, there's less than 0.25% Native American. There is a substantial mixed-race population here. But I would encourage dark-skinned black people, light-skinned black people, everybody else, but not just white, college-educated people to apply for these jobs. I want to talk about the N-word. I'm here. You would never have seen me again here if if it hadn't been for the city coming to my property and telling me how much they hate black people and how much they hate me, and then destroying my property while the legal department says, hey, he's got no rights. We don't we don't believe in equality of under the law in Davenport.
Mr. Eklund.
I'm going to be doing
Last morning.
I'm going to be doing an article on the N-word. And I'm asking the city council, I'm asking that next week, if every single person would go around the table, except for Mr. Kelly, who's already spoken, and say, have they ever heard the N-word used in city hall? Have they ever heard the term lowlife used by elected officials or city staff? And
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Paul Vasquez, third ward. You have to bear with me. I didn't get a chance to print this out. I stand by this, though. By now, many of us had heard about the proposed changes to the public comment section of our city council meetings that the mayor has proposed. Although I am sure the city will argue it has the right to initiate this change, to me, it simply is an attempt to silence all of us. The First Amendment of our Constitution guarantees our right to redress a grievance. Not only is that our right, it is our responsibility to question our government. A different question to be asked is, is this an attempt at censorship? Numerous court decisions define censorship as a, quote, suppression of speech or public communication, close quote. I view the proposed changes the city is seeking as censorship, and censorship is prohibited under our laws. There may be an easier solution to stop this policy change and to allow all of us to have our voices to continue to be heard by everybody. Our aldermen are elected to represent us, all of us. I have been advised that the issue can be put before the council, and the council by a public vote has final say. I have also spoken with the Anspudsmen in Des Moines. I believe this question, the question to be put before our council is, and this is this is what I was advised, we have a reasonable expectation that we be we be provided an answer in a reasonable amount of time if we ask questions. Therefore, if the city wants to proceed with this change, when many of us are against it, I believe it is the responsibility of the aldermen to discuss this openly and to vote in front of the entire city about it. Therefore, the citizens of Davenport, all of us, will know everything that we need to, will know that if it, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Anyway, if it, in that way, the citizens of Davenport will be given full transparency about it, will know why some officials think it's necessary, and an open vote will also expose where the aldermen stand in that position. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to print it out. It's a little small. I'd like to. But the bottom line is, to me, is transparency. I agree with the earlier comment. To me, when wheels move, when people promote or put something out there, generally speaking, they've done legwork, they've talked about it in some smoke-filled room I called them, but other people don't know. Maybe people that need to talk about things, communication that needs to be shared doesn't happen. And that's, I think that is the root of a lot of problems, that certain people make a decision in a smaller group, and the rest of the people that know or should interact don't get that opportunity. And I think, again, I think transparency is the largest problem. I think if people if people knew, if people acted when they were supposed to, you wouldn't have half the problems you've got right now, and you wouldn't be trying to change policy after how many years. You're changing it for a reason. And what's that reason? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Cheryl Shagna, third ward, and would like to go back on the table discussion about the animal control and bring up that
Ma'am, we only at this point, you only discussed stuff that was not on the agenda. Please, thank you.
Okay. Well, then, so then I can't bring up about the percentage of so then I can't bring up about the percentage of expenses versus the services from the animal control.
No ma'am, we already discussed the animal controls issue.
I'm sorry?
I'm not gonna debate you, this is for other items other than the, what was on the agenda, thank you.
Okay, because of the discussion and things were brought in, then I wanted that opportunity to come back and rebut what was discussed about the money amounts, uh, 80% of the expenses for the city of Davenport.
So it'll be on the discussion agenda next week.
Um, so it'll be in, I can talk about it next week. Okay, so then, the other thing, um, was, yeah, who is running this city? Unfortunately, it seems like it's become very adversarial, and that's very sad. It shouldn't be adversarial, it should not be us versus you, it should not be you versus you. Um, it should not be that when people are talking, people keep their heads completely down, um, and they are not even acknowledging the information that is being presented to them, that is respect. Um, and so, um, it's broken. And if it wasn't broken, I wouldn't say crap, I would not walk up here and say nothing. But it's broken, and it needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed for us, it needs to be fixed for our kids, and it needs to be fixed for our grandkids. I've said it before, this is your opportunity to fix it. I tagged the city in a post this week from a friend of mine that happens to be the director of public works in a city that is larger than this city. And he has brought something to his city and to his staff called the Quality Improvement Process. He brought it from the corporate world where he lived it. The principles they learned, they brought to the city government. And then he's able to talk about all of the successes like the decline in potholes. The, um, decline in potholes dropped tremendously. They were actually even able to cut their staff. Um, the staff, cutting staff saved them over $4 million in one year, whereas they put out $35 million on the street, which is the largest program ever in the history of that particular city. They said they did have a tough year, but in spite of that, they had, um... The reduction of potholes went down from 153,000, decreased down to 85,000. Street division was left with only four pothole requests on the 31st of December because they have a program where they set goals, and their employees come back, and they're able to show that they have achieved this, their goals. And by achieving their goals, they have been able to achieve their work and their efforts in spite of budget cuts, putting good managerial principles in place, along with a passionate spirit to succeed. I think if they can do it in a city that's bigger than this one, it can be done in this city as well. The communication needs to open up. People need to admit when they've made mistakes, ask for forgiveness when it's appropriate, suck it up when it's appropriate, set the egos aside, and put what's best for the city first. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I live in the Sixth Ward, my name's Dale Gilmour, and I approve this message. Before I begin, I'd like to say welcome to the five new council members, and welcome back to the five others and the mayor. Tonight, I'm gonna begin with a story. This is not a joke, it's a serious story with a lesson to be learned. I think you'll find the story may reflect a similar situation you find yourself in. This is a story about a seven-year-old boy and his toy plastic hammer. Every day, he'd go to the neighborhood park, sit on the park bench, he'd place his thumb on the park bench and began hitting his thumb with the plastic hammer. Not hard, but hard enough that it hurt. One day, an elderly gentleman was walking through the park and sat down next to the boy to rest. He observed what the boy was doing and asked, "Why are you hitting your thumb with the plastic toy hammer?" The boy replied, "Because it feels so good when I stop." A couple weeks ago, you had a work session on proposed code of conduct for city officials and employees. Unfortunately, my wife was having surgery on her hand at the same time, so I was unable to attend. I have a pretty good idea what was discussed. This code of conduct will outline what behavior is acceptable and what behavior is not. I find it sad that a code of conduct is even necessary, but I guess it is. Now let's turn our attention 180 degrees and discuss proposing a code of conduct for the public with business. There isn't one. Anyone off the streets allowed to stand before you and make unfounded accusations toward you? I believe slander is the term I would use. Aren't you tired of being called murderers, racist, white supremacists, and every other name in the book? And accusations towards staff? They didn't sign up for the verbal abuse, and quite frankly, it should never be allowed. I'm not a lawyer, but I believe there could be some legal implications over some things that are allowing to be said. Do we really need any more legal problems? I have an idea. Why don't you suspend the public with business portion of the meeting? Now wait a minute. There's no state law or statute that requires a public with business portion of a meeting. Some other municipalities have it, and some don't. Instead, ask that all elected officials remain in council chambers to meet with the public for at least five minutes after the meeting is adjourned. That way, every member of the public will have an opportunity to meet one-on-one with their elected representatives. Dialogues will be encouraged, possible solutions explored, who knows what might be accomplished, problem solved. Some people are uncomfortable speaking in public, and this problem could, could, this opportunity could solve that. Sure, there, there are members of the public who will complain that their rights are being violated by not having an opportunity to their free speech. They're the ones who get up every week and spew the same lies and hate towards any, everyone and everything. Then they rush home to see if they made it on the 10 o'clock news, hoping to get their five seconds of fame. And if they only get to spew their lies and accusations twice a month instead of every week, and only for three minutes, well, you're just discriminating against them. Remember earlier in a story about the boy and the hammer? Well, each of you are in that story and represent the thumb. And the public with business is the hammer. How long are you willing to allow these beatings to continue? That decision is totally up to the 11 of you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. It has been 255 days since the preventable building collapse happened, and there's not a day that goes by that I don't think about Brandon, Ryan, and Daniel's families. I think I would be correct in saying that many of us have suffered significant losses in our lives. It may have been our parents, our grandparents, or even a child, they're all devastating in their own way. Two days ago, my family suffered a heartbreaking loss when my 30-year-old nephew died unexpectedly. To say my family was and still is in shock is an understatement. The thing that makes it even more devastating is that he has three young children, and trying to explain to them that their daddy is no longer here was not an easy thing for my sister to do. My five-year-old great-niece cried as my sister told her that daddy's no longer here, he went to heaven to be with Grandma Peggy, who is my mom. It was a loss that could have been prevented, but sadly, the ones who could have and should have intervened weren't fully aware of how bad things truly were. They missed the cries for help. So here we are today devastated, grieving, and seeking answers that we can't get. I can't help feeling that this is just another way that I am emotionally connected to the innocent victims of 324 Main Street. They called for help many times, their pleas were disregarded and went unnoticed by the ones that had the ability to help them. Two children are fatherless, just as my great-nieces and nephew are, and all of that could have been prevented. We need to wake up and stop living as if nothing ever happened. Many of us have seen it with our own eyes, heard it with our own ears, and felt it with our whole hearts as we watched those innocent people standing down here, waiting to get word that their loved ones were okay. Except they were not okay, and they're still not okay today. Because the city they live in cares more about big business and money than it does living, breathing, flesh and blood, human beings. When are you people going to stop playing games and start doing what you were elected to do? People's lives have been changed forever by this tragedy, but apparently yours haven't been because you're still trying to push your own agendas, breaking laws left and right, not to mention infringing upon our constitutional rights. You can try to shut us down in here, but you cannot control what we say when we leave this place, and we will never stop speaking truth on behalf of 324 Main Street and our city. People are praying and crying out for justice to be served for the innocent people, and God hears the cries of his children, and he answers them. Psalm 82, 3 through 4 tells us, "Defend the weak and the fatherless, uphold the cause of the poor and the oppressed, rescue the weak and the needy, deliver them from the hand of the wicked." You can go against the people and possibly win, but if you go against God, you will never win. I will be praying for each one of you to choose his way and not your own because it will not go well for you on Judgment Day if you don't change. And as for the gentleman that wants to sit here and say we're up here for our fame and we're here to bash you, no, we want help for the victims because they are not getting it. We are behind you in the Fifth Ward, and maybe if we would have illegally cut checks, we could get some help. But three people got checks because their feelings got hurt, so maybe we should have the Humane Society get a separation agreement so they can get their own.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, LaCona Dixon, Seventh Ward. Um, no matter what we do or what we say, you guys are gonna find a loophole because you guys are saying that you don't wanna be sued by what we say. Um, which is fine. But you are willing to give away $1.6 million, but you worry about what's coming out of my mouth. It, well, probably more money. Three people got away with getting plenty of money and insurance and everything else, but y'all worry about what comes out of my mouth in five minutes. We all, oh, another thing, I don't like how y'all guys sit up here and act like we don't know what we're talking about on certain subjects when we... I'm 33 years old, I can read and read very well, and I can listen, and I can hear 100%. You don't have to come up here and tell us what we're saying is wrong. Y'all get up in these seats, y'all think y'all can just, y'all put the hammer down like we don't understand what's going on, we do, we not stupid. We not dumb. 'Cause I can't talk about the subject, but we do, we understand what's going on. Okay? Um, and another thing. Y'all, y'all are the, the epitome of 10 seats of secrets. Secrets. Y'all hear stuff from the newspaper, wait till the lecture is over and just released $2 million worth of a page of words. 'Cause y'all knew if the, if it got out in the community, they wouldn't vote none of y'all back in. I, I can't imagine how other people feel about this money just was spilled out. And I, to be honest with you, I don't even understand how you guys think it's okay that it happened either. One more thing. Somebody in this room has the audacity to say that we come in here and call y'all murderers, we call you this, we call you that, racial slurs, this and that. The person who does not speak up about a racial slur is the problem. You are the problem. And, and for you to sit here upon the person who had to experience the problem, and had those words come out of your mouth, you need to check yourself. Lord, help me, God, help me. Oh, Jesus. Kinda hold your peace. I don't need five minutes of fame. I don't need it. My name was LaCona Dixon, I was born LaCona Dixon. I'm gonna leave here LaCona Dixon if I don't get married. But Dixon will forever be my name. It runs through my blood, it runs through my veins, it runs through my heart. Okay? When I was out there crying, taking up, getting out water, praying, crying, I didn't ask for this. I would rather be home. There's, I could be cooking dinner right now. I could be watching TV right now. I bet you 90 Day Fiance is all right now as we speak. I could have a big bowl of buttery popcorn. Okay? I don't wanna be here either. But unfortunately, fortunately, I'm here because I'm a voice. So five minutes of fame, I, when I came out of my mother's womb, I was destined for this. Don't question it. Don't question it, I was destined for this. My voice will ring on for many years. Maybe y'all won't like it, but I guarantee you, my voice will, will forever ring, and I'll probably be in the history book before you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My sister, I'm sorry, LaShawna Dixon, Seventh Ward. And that is, my sister is a hard person to come behind because my sister speaks nothing but 100% facts. And I hope when you go home and lay down at night, you think about what she said. But let me go ahead and start it off the right way. Happy Black History Month. Come on. I wore my fro just for all of you. And when I came in the room today, we should have been celebrating Black History. But I didn't see no awards given out, no trophies given out. This room should be filled with African-Americans and children because this is our 29 days to celebrate being Black in America. And that is a wonderful thing, and then also is a very, very tragical thing. What my people have had to endure in America, and it's still going on to this day. At this time, I would like to give honor to Tim Kelly for being the only African-American on this board. Thank you for Peacock for all his work, too. You don't have to point an order at me, 'cause I know you're gonna be mad. And I would give Pe- uh, Peacock his flowers, too. He just couldn't stand it, so he had to go ahead and leave. Okay, now let's get to the real business. Since y'all wanna sit up here and take away people's time and because of our five minutes of fame, 'cause I'm gonna take it three minutes, I'll take it out on the front porch, I'll take it wherever I need to take it. But let's go ahead and talk about it. Somebody had the audacity to ask for $5 million for inspections of property, property inspections, da-da-da, whatever, inspectors. If you wanna start it with the people that you hired to do the job, to do their job right, you wouldn't be asking for $5 million. You don't need $5 million, and I hope they tell you to get up out of their face. Like grandpa would say, "I already told you, don't ask me for nothing." You don't need $5 million. Start with the people that you already have employed. How about you start there? Because obviously inspections aren't going right 'cause, right across the street. Inspections aren't going right because Ms. Latrice. Obviously, it's, people aren't doing their homework here. So before you start asking for money, clean it up. You don't need to be asking for money. And I wanna say, it's just a disappointing disappointment that on the news again, we're being embarrassed because y'all guys decided that Kelly, am I gonna get point of order? Lee, okay, I see you shake your head.
Yes, ma'am.
And another person was left out of... You should have said, as a leadership, y'all should have said, "No, we're not gonna do this without them." If they are the ones being accused of doing something, and I know for a fact that I've heard somebody use the word "honey", and they don't wanna get offended when it's used towards them? Who's harassing who? 'Cause I know at least, I can be for surely, that these people are harassing nobody. This is somebody playing Suzie. It helped win their perks. So now you sit up here and you, I'm quite sure you two wanna talk about the fame, but I've seen the fame in three, three people in the newspaper yesterday, I mean, on the news yesterday, and on KWQC, talking about they harassed them. Harassed who? That was just their way to get their money. I wanna thank, uh, Rob Sands, 'cause he's on his way, he's already been here. So if I was some of y'all, I would just pack it up. Pack it up, and if you're not sure what that means, pack it up. Can I speak about the Humane Society while I got time? Okay, I'll talk about it next time, 'cause I got something else to say, thank you, my, um, my chairpeople of the audience. Um, but, yeah. Worse, it doesn't matter if we could stay in here, if it's on the camera, we're gonna get it out. Now, I don't care if I have to seal it up and give it to an envelope to the news, it's gonna come out. I, I hate to use corrupt, but Davenport is corrupt. And I don't know who it is, but your day is almost here. It's almost here, and then to find out two people that sitting on this board right now likes to call black people colored? I want y'all to come and ask, tell me I'm colored. I want y'all to do it, 'cause I promise you, I promise you, you won't like the response, "Call me colored." Bet you won't do it. I'll be waiting. If y'all don't want no more trouble, y'all don't want no more smoke, I advise for y'all to pack it up. 'Cause now you wanna play... Because now you want to play victim. But we're not, but do it, we just want the news to be out there. Pack it up.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Okay, anything, Ms. Merritt? Very good. We do not have an executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn? Motion second, all in favor? All right, have a good weekend.